Meeting of the Willits City Council of June 9th to order at 6:30. As usual, we're doing this by teleconference under the special provisions of meeting to COVID. And I'm going to turn it over to Kathy to lead us in budge the flag and roll call.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Allison.
Connie.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mayor Strong.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey. Thank you. We have on our agenda an open time for any public communications, and we prefer any comments that people would like to bring to our attention that are not on our agenda. And we generally have a three-minute limit on such comments. And you're allowed to criticize us if you wish and bring any matters that were within the jurisdiction of the city. So anybody who would like to make a public comment? I am not hearing any. Of course, you can comment on the agenda items as they come up. Okay, so moving on, we have public matters. One is a proclamation designating Western Wear Days from June 18th through July 4th. And I forgot to print my copy out. Would some other councilmember like to read the proclamation? Do you have it handy? Does anybody? I can go and get it. Maybe I should do that. Jerry, are you there?
Yeah, let me pull it up here. Hear this.
Okay, great.
The proclamation of the Willits City Council designating Willits Western Wear Days, 95th anniversary, June 18th, July 4th, 2021. Whereas the Willits Frontier Days is the oldest continuous rodeo in the state of California, this year's theme, There's No Place Like Home, marks the 95th anniversary of the Willits Frontier Days, which still continues to draw people from all over to come and not only celebrate Independence Day, but to celebrate our community. And whereas this year, 2021, we are continuing to recover from COVID-19, but have been given the ability to once again gather and celebrate safely our Independence Day with friends and family in a place we all call home. And whereas each year, this event is run solely by volunteers with many hours dedicated to putting together this traditional event. And whereas this annual community event instills great pride in all of us, called Willits Home, past and present. And therefore, I, Matt Strong, Mayor, City of Willits, along with Vice Mayor Spreano Rodriguez, councilmembers Larry Stransky, Greta Connie, and Fernando Gonzalez, hereby proclaim June 18th through July 4th, 2021 as Western Wear Days in the City of Willits and encourage all who enter the community to join us in the rodeo spirit by wearing Western apparel. To witness thereof, I have here on two, set my hand and cause the seal of the city to be fixed on this ninth day of June 2021. Matt Strong, Mayor, City of Willits. Commuted, Matt.
Yes, thank you for reporting that up. Anybody on our call today who wants to make any comment about Western Wear Days or Frontier's Day events? June 18th, I know, is going to be the hometown celebration downtown, and then there's a whole series of Frontier's Day events. Is there anyone else who wanted to comment on that? Hearing none, we will go on. Our next public matter is a presentation by Allison Talbot from PG&E regarding wildfire, wildland fire contingency planning. And I know this is on everybody's mind, so I'm really happy to welcome you, Allison. So I imagine you have a PowerPoint, so take it away.
Thank you very much. I will just give it a moment for the telepoint to come up. Okay, well, good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Allison Talbot, local government relations representative for PG&E for Mendocino and Humboldt Counties. I'm calling in from my home just outside of Puebla. My family is one door away making dinner. Apologies if there is any background noise. So tonight, I'm going to talk about what we're doing to reduce the threat of wildfire in Willits in the county and system-wide. I plan to emphasize ways PG&E can assist customers with preparations for a public safety power shut-off, or PSPS. At PG&E, our most important responsibility is the safety of our customers and communities. We all know California continues to experience an increase in wildfire risk and a longer wildfire season. And over the last decade, the frequency and severity of wildfires have increased exponentially. On this slide is one of the tools we use when assessing wildfire risk. It's the Fire Threat Map of California. This map was developed by the California Public Utilities Commission in coordination with CAL FIRE and the U.S. Forest Service. It's based on input from electric utilities, communications, infrastructure providers, and local public safety agencies. It helps us plan for potential wildfire and focus power prevention efforts. And as you can see on the map, nearly one-third of the electric lines that provide our customers with power are now in high-fire-threat areas. You can see the high-fire-threat map area for Willits. Orange is Tier 2, Elevated Risk, red is Tier 3, Extreme Risk. You can find this map on your own by visiting cpc.ca.gov/firethreatmaps. Next. We are continuing to evolve our Community Wildfire Safety Program, or CWSP, in order to strengthen and improve our electric system for the safety of our customers and communities. The focus areas include meeting and then also exceeding state vegetation safety standards to manage trees and other vegetation located near power lines that could cause a wildfire or a power outage. We're continuing to build a safer, more resilient system by hardening lines and installing sectionalizing devices that help to reduce the size of the PSPS events. We are testing and using new tools and technologies to pinpoint how to best prevent and respond to the risk of wildfires, and we are working around to improve PSPS events for our customers and communities by providing more resources before, during, and after events. We are focused on listening to our customers, learning from the better data and technology, and providing more resources than ever before. We know we all rely on electricity every day. We want to work with our customers on solutions that minimize risks to our infrastructure during times of high-fire threat. Next is what's new this year in 2021. That'll be the next that we go. We're building on the improvements we made last year. We're continuing to reduce wildfire risks through hardening the grid, addressing vegetation, and tracking weather conditions, and monitoring for wildfires. So we're working to reduce the PSPS impacts by installing over 275 additional distribution sectionalizing devices and transmission switches to limit the number of customers who are impacted by these events. These sectionalizing devices separate the grid into smaller sections. We're also continuing to improve our weather modeling and refining our forecasting through five-day forecast data, and we're preparing 10 more substations to accept temporary generation. However, differently than last year, we are not pre-staging generators in Mendocino County as well as many other places, and I'll address that issue shortly. Finally, on this slide, we are supporting customers and communities by providing more resources before, during, and after PSPS events, including sending customer notifications in 16 languages and providing new address, excuse me, alerts, which will allow customers and non-customers to sign up to receive alerts about any address they choose. That's a significant improvement from past practice. Previously, customers who lived in a master meter setting like a mobile home park or some apartment buildings, or folks whose landlord is the customer of record, they weren't able to look up if they would be impacted by a PSPS event. And we have now enabled a system where you can look for events by address. It's also quite useful if you're concerned for an elderly loved one or want to track a daycare or office, for example. We're also providing batteries to low-income medical baseline customers in high-fire-threat areas. We're targeting 370 ADA-accessible community resource center sites, which can be opened during an event to serve impacted communities and customers. And we're providing meal replacement options for customers in 46 counties, including Mendocino. And we are expanding our partnerships with community-based organizations to better support customers with access and functional needs. Next slide, please. Next up is an overview for the general Mendocino County area. On this slide, we've provided an overview of some of our local wildfire safety and customer support efforts, including system hardening, sectionalizing devices, enhanced bridge management, community resource centers, weather stations, and high-definition cameras. Some of these numbers, though, I think benefit from some explanation. For example, the enhanced vegetation management line reflects zero miles complete, and in fact, we have completed a good portion of that work, but it goes through a verification process that hasn't been completed yet. So quite a bit is done, more work is ongoing and planned. And the system hardening number reflects four different projects around the county. However, it doesn't include other resilience work that we're completing, including routine vegetation management, manual pole clearing that's being completed by our safety infrastructure protection teams, substation defensible space work that we're getting ready to begin shortly or may actually have just begun. And we'll continue to work with the Mendocino Fire Safety Council to fund defensible space work in the county. A $60,000 grant was just announced to them last week. And finally, we commenced air patrols in advance of the season. The patrols help us identify hazards, they provide for better circuit mapping, and they reduce the restoration times and help us plan for our in-event response. So sectionalizing in Mendocino County, to limit the number of customers impacted during an event, we're continuing to install sectionalizing devices and automating some existing devices. To date, we've installed 26 sectionalizing devices in Mendocino County. This year, we plan to install four more. And I mentioned before, these devices separate the electric grid into smaller parts, so it allows us to de-energize targeted areas during severe weather and fire conditions and reduce the total number of customers who experience the PSPS event. And I'm going to touch on that substation generation now. In 2020, we worked to lessen PSPS impacts by preparing substations throughout the service area to receive temporary generation and stage, we staged temporary gen at specific substations and service yards to use during events. We prepared 10 substations in Mendocino so that they could accept generation. We pre-staged generators at five of those substations. And throughout, we did prepare the Willits sub, but we did not pre-stage there, though. However, throughout the last year, we've made improvements to weather modeling, grid operations, and overall system resiliency, which means many, if not most, of these substations are now significantly less likely to experience a PSPS-related outage. So the substations are still ready to accept mobile generation, but we won't be pre-staging as the likelihood of meeting them has been significantly reduced. And we'll go to the next slide, and we've talked briefly about public safety power shut-off. Some of it, I realize, will be remedial, but I think there's benefit in going over it briefly. For the safety of our customers and communities, the PSPS continues to be a necessary tool in our wildfire safety toolkit as a last resort. High winds can cause tree branches and debris to contact, energize electric lines. They can damage our equipment and then cause a wildfire. And as a result, we may need to turn off power during severe weather conditions for public safety. I want to emphasize these events are always weather-driven. They're only called when extreme weather and wildfire risk are present. And of note, I think because electricity travels miles from the generation source to get to your home or business, you can be affected by a PSPS if the infrastructure that serves you is affected by the severe weather, even if that weather is miles away from your home or location. So next slide talks about the conditions that could lead to a PSPS event. When we're deciding if the power needs to be shut off for the safety of our customers and communities we serve, we review a combination of factors. As each weather situation is unique, we carefully analyze the following factors: low humidity levels, a forecast of high winds, the dry material on the ground, and vegetation that could come in contact with a power line. Other considerations include if there's a red flag warning, though that is, sometimes I get questions, a red flag comes and people think, oh, boy, here's a PSPS. That is just one factor, it is not the only. And then, you know, of course, there are real-time, on-the-ground observations from our wildfire safety operation center and from our crews who are walking, working across the service territory. Every wildfire season is different, and the ongoing drought, the real-time conditions, and our commitment to safety will determine the number of times we'll need to shut off the power. On the next slide, I'm going to talk about how customers are notified. We always do our best to share what we know about the weather and our equipment as soon as we can, keeping in mind, of course, weather conditions can be uncertain. We can expect to receive notifications two days before shutting off the power when we're in the watch mode, a day before, still in watch, and then just before de-energizing power lines when we're in a warning mode. Well, you'll also hear from us once a day during the event and again, once we have restored power. We provide updates to our customers through automated calls, texts, and emails. And if you take nothing else away from this, I really encourage you and all of your constituents to review the contact information we have on file for you by visiting pge.com/mewildfiresafety. We can, you can update it. Perhaps it used to be email, and we prefer a text for this kind of thing. It makes sure that we can contact you. And then, again, I mentioned the address alerts. This year, we have launched our address alerts, and so if you're not a PG&E account holder, you can still receive PSPS notifications for any address. We also provide PSPS updates at pge.com to local news and radio outlets and through social media channels, some you can see on the slide at the bottom. The next slide is about customer support programs. This year, we're doing more than we ever have before to help customers and communities during and after events. We're partnering with community-based organizations, working side by side to provide support and resources throughout a PSPS event. We are providing information regarding PSPS in 16 non-English languages. We're increasing meal replacement options, collaborating with local food banks, and Meals on Wheels to provide food replacement packages to cover every county likely to be impacted during a PSPS. And we're collaborating with CFILC, excuse me, the California Foundation for End Living Centers Disability Disaster Access and Resources Program. Bit of a mouthful there. To enable qualifying customers who use electrical medical devices to access backup portable batteries through a grant or lease-to-own or financial loan application. An additional assistance through this program includes access to transportation resources, hotel vouchers, food stipends. It's really been an enormous help to a lot of people. We're also providing batteries through the Portable Battery Program for low-income medical baseline customers with critical medical needs. And new this year, and I think for both my area and yours, we're providing generator rebates that could be very important. We're offering customers who depend on a well water pump and live in a high-fire-threat area, we're providing rebates for purchasing a qualified portable power generator. Next slide is about community resource centers. During a PSPS event, we do open CRCs, Community Resource Centers, where community members can access resources, including a safe location to meet their basic power needs like charging small medical equipment and electronic devices, up-to-date information about the event, and then water, snacks, and other essential items to reduce hardship. And obviously, of course, to keep our customers and communities safe, all of the CRCs reflect appropriate COVID-19 health considerations and the state and county guidelines. And the next slide, which is the last one, you see you're wondering if I'm ever going to end here. We'll go back one last slide, sorry, to more information and tools to prepare. We've made a variety of wildfire preparedness tools available online, including our PSPS address alerts, information and resources available in more than 250 languages, our weather and PSPS forecasting webpage, preparedness tools and activities for kids, which evidently just won a pretty cool award for its effective communication. We also have the Safety Action Center and our Backup Power webpage. This slide is, there's a lot on there, but all of this can be found at sort of a one-stop-shop And I thank you for letting me go on with all of those slides. I know PowerPoint can be a bit much, but I'm available to answer questions if I may.
Thank you very much, Allison. That was very, very useful. On the second last slide, it said that if you go to PGA, unless you're, what's all there was, but the address alerts, is that, orally, you gave another one, which was a different part of it. In other words, to get our own address, our business address, while to be notified.
Sure. Both of which can be found. If it's for your own account, that one is, I jotted it down here. If you're updating your own account about your address, oh, gosh, I'm going to, I don't, I turned the page and now I can't find it, but anything, you mean, really and truly, if you go to pge.com/wildfiresafety, there are a bunch of different links there. And in truth, anytime you go to our website, it's all about the wildfire safety and PSPS. It's pretty easy. If you have any trouble, certainly feel free to reach out to me, and I can help you navigate that.
Okay, thank you very much. Any comments from our councilmembers? Yes, Jerry?
A question for Allison, two things. One is, in the event of a PSP, would you be staffing the resource center at City Hall?
Yes, yes, we will.
Then is the slides you just presented available, translated in Spanish, that you can make on our webpage?
I'm certain I can come up with that. If I may go back to our staff at PG&E, and then I could work with the city manager, if that's okay?
Thank you. I just figured that way we get the word out.
Certainly, thank you.
Are there comments from councilmembers? Any comments or questions from the public or from the staff?
I have a comp question to ask. This is Bear Kemmerow.
Go ahead, Bear.
I was going to ask Ms. Talbot, since you are not going to pre-take your generators where you think they might be needed. The last time there was a major outage in Willits was several days, and the biggest problem people in this town were having was all the gas stations were shut down except Brown's Corner, which bought their own generator and had a mile-long line. So what is the possibility maybe, if this happens again, that PG&E would bring those generators to the different gas stations in Willits and hook them up so we don't have mile-long lines and people who need their gas can get on the road and also fill up their generators? That would sure help this town a lot.
Well, I don't want to, in any way, be untruthful, so I will tell you that the generators we have are the giant ones that are on the back of a, you know, a 18-wheeler-type trailer. So those certainly would not be appropriate for gas station use. However, I know that last season, and the one before, on the county webpage, they began keeping, on the webpage, they began keeping a list of businesses who had purchased or acquired generators, and I believe the gas station list has increased a lot, and, but I should be careful, that is not my business, if you will. So I will bring the comment back. However, we do not typically provide generators to businesses unless they are hospitals in an emergency or fire stations, that kind of thing. I appreciate the comment, though, and I'll bring it back to my leadership.
I see Judy Burgess. You have to unmute yourself. Oops.
May I make a quick comment about the gas stations before Judy speaks?
Certainly, granted, go ahead.
I was actually, I'm glad that Bear brought that up, because I was going to mention it as well. It was a critical concern during the PSPS, if I think of 2019, when people were running out of gas for their generators. And at the time, I had asked the city to consider writing a strong word of letter to Safeway, who's our largest grocery store and gas station, alerting them to how much jeopardy they put our community in by not allowing, not having a generator to allow their gas station to function during the PSPS. And the former city manager decided it wasn't, it wasn't a good idea, and so we didn't do it. And I just wonder if maybe now, preemptively, it would be time to reconsider sending a letter to Safeway and asking that they consider some preparation in order to help our community in the event that there is a PSPS later this year. It was a pretty big problem for a lot of people. So just something for the council to consider, and I just, to wrap up your time, Judy.
That sounds like a good idea to me. The only concern I would have would be just singling out only one gas station. It might be good to, I think Safeway is one of the, the major provider to the community, but if we were to send such a letter, why not send it to the other grocery stores and gas stations that are, and essential services? And ask if they are. And also, does PG&E provide any assistance for such businesses to buy generators? What would be a question for Allison?
Now, I'm not certain that we have a generator rebate program for businesses. I would have to get back to you on, I can find out, and I will get back to you. You know, something I'm not sure came through, I think what your presentation is that, well, I am absolutely all for preparedness and for reaching out and finding out who has what in advance of an event. Certainly, that is good. Our internal analysis, kind of looking back over a 10-year period and 30 years of weather and fire history, we are not going to have another 2019. We really don't predict that, you guys. And it, the system, our systems, our resiliency has improved enormously. I don't want to say I'm trying to set your mind at ease, because I do think the more preparedness, the better, the more resilience, the better. But I wish I had said more clearly in my presentation, we do not anticipate going back to those large-scale, long-term, days-on-end events. 2019 was really a black swan. We are a lot better off.
Well, and on the other hand, the fire danger this year is pretty extreme, so.
Yes.
I'm glad you're much better prepared, that, because we're going to need that, I think. Judy Burgess, you need to unmute yourself, and Colin, unmute him.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I was really upset to hear that PG&E took the generator out of our shelter in place, place here. And I wanted to remind PG&E, thank you for your presentation, that we not only have wildfire needs. wildfire need for our shelter and electricity, but we have high winds, we have floods, we have snow, we have traffic accidents, we have fish guts dumped that we need to go to the shelter for, for fresh air. We have many handicapped people dependent on medical devices for their life. And I would request that PG&E install a permanent generator in our shelter or at our substation. And if that's not possible year-round, I think the city ought to investigate grants and gifts to get our own generator. We don't just need it because of fire season, we need it year-round. Thank you.
So I'm sure Brian has made note of that comment. And all right, other comments from the public? I am not hearing any. Yes, Jerry Gonzalez.
Unrelated to this, we're done. Marcy Berry just wanted to thank everybody. She wasn't able to jump on the line. She sent me a text on behalf of the Frontier Days board, herself, they wanted to thank.
Okay, thank you. The previous agenda item, yes. Okay. Yes, Sabrina?
I'd like this Department of Commerce, State Department, making a request that the city council send a letter, and I'd like that just on the page to be sent out to grocery stores and gas stations. I'd like to make a call for her. And Allison, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Sabrina. I'm getting an echo on my line. Is that everybody getting an echo?
No. I can't figure out the audio on my computer, so I dialed in also.
That may be the problem. So we're hearing your phone. Thank you. Okay. So if you need to dial in again, then make sure you hang up again at the end, so we don't keep getting echo. All right, I believe, or no, we're still getting an echo.
Oh, mute mine, maybe?
Yeah, could be. Okay. Let's move along. Thank you very much, Allison, for that presentation.
And thank you for having me.
Yeah, and I'm really glad to hear about all the improvements that PG&E is making.
All right. Mayor, does that, am I unfinished plan? I just wanted to make sure, it's so hard when you're not in the room. I, all done?
I didn't hear any other comments from anybody, so yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a great evening, everyone. Thank you for having me.
I do still have an echo, but it's not too bad. We do not have any ordinances to enact this evening. We have three items on consent, actually, we only have two because there are no city council minutes. We have a resolution authorizing Willets Frontier Day's parade route for July 4th and for the declarations on PG&E calls as part of Frontier's Day. And the other item on the consent calendar is approving a purchase of a police K-9 from the Mendocino County Sheriff's Office. There was information in the packet regarding that, so unless we want to delve into either of those items, we can keep them on the consent column. Does anyone want to pull an item up? Do we want a short explanation from our Chief Lusuraga regarding the K-9, just so people who didn't get the packet, you want to give us a quick summary on that one?
Sure. We swore in Officer Sergeant Trent James this past Monday. He comes to us from the Mendocino Sheriff's Office, and he is taking up one of our sergeant positions. He's an experienced deputy who is by all accounts ready for the next step. One of the things that kind of was nice about getting him onto our department, that he was a, one of the K-9 handlers for the Sheriff's Office. And so there was, there was certainly an interest on my part to kind of revitalize our K-9 program. I'm a strong proponent of K-9s, you know, not only because of the technical expertise they bring to searches, tracking, their contact detection, as well as being a force multiplier, a protection dog for their partner, their handler. And they're great, great bridges to the community, kids, the schools, the community events, which we will certainly have Sergeant James take, take the dog to. The dog's name is Hank. He's two and a half, three years old. He is a black German Shepherd color. I can't get the angles on these cameras. There has been a lot of comment about his floppy ear, but most people think it's cute, so I kind of like it. So we would, we wanted to get Hank on board with us as well, and I think he would be a great asset for the, for the community, for the department. He's been very well received by everybody here in our organization. And like I said, there's a whole lot of things that come along with, with having a K-9 inside is just, you know, being able to search for drugs. There's a multitude of other things that we can use him for. So if anybody has any questions, I'm open.
Jerry, I just want to add to the comments from Chief Lusuraga. Partially, what helped support financially this transfer of Hank is assistance from the District Attorney's Office, and I just want to acknowledge their effort behind this commitment to the community and to the adjacent area to accommodate a K-9 unit that was lacking in the force within the department. And I just want to, like I said, it's part of knowledge, the goodwill that the District Attorney's Office extended to the police department and to specifically Chief Lusuraga.
Yeah, I'm sorry for repeating that, but it was definitely a great help that the District Attorney Ister gave to us, as well as Sheriff Kendall's openness to, and willingness to let Hank come over. And everybody, all three organizations or agencies share the belief that a K-9 is needed in this sector of the county, not only for our city, but in the surrounding, surrounding area. So it's a good get for everybody.
Okay. I'm sort of mindful of the fact that this is supposed to be consent calendar, but I think a little discussion is good. So Jerry, did you have a comment, too?
Just curious, were you, you haven't seen the budget for the coming year, you just going to repurpose some of the old K-9 equipment from before, or are you going to give it a budget? We don't have to discuss it, I'm just curious.
I, no, we're going to get, we're going to have to outfit one of our new cars, not the two new ones we have, we just got, but in the next cycle, equip that for, properly for a K-9.
Any comment, do I ask for comments from the public before we get a motion on the consent calendar? Is there any comments on these items?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar and to welcome Sergeant James and our K-9 team.
I'll start the vote. Okay, motion and second. Was there any public comment? Not hearing any. We will have a roll call vote by copy.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Connie.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Rodriguez. Mayor Strong.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Moving on to, yes, thank you, Chief. I think the next item is commissions, agencies, authorities. We do not today have any action as one of our other hats that we wear, like the K-9 Commission or the successor agency to. So we're going to move to item 8A, which is, eight is the city manager's report, A is Centennial Reservoir Update. City Manager Bender.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I do have a couple of staff members on the, participating on this meeting that we jumped in and helped throw out some details related to this item 8A. So Centennial Reservoir Update. So just want to be very clear and explain to the public that on May 29th through the 31st, there was an unintentional release of water from Centennial Reservoir Morris. That is something we're still looking at, the track of events that led to it. We have identified the, what was initially happened, and we have some suggestions why it happened, it was not, like I said, it was unintentional. We believe it possibly was a valve failure or some issues with the infrastructure associated with Centennial Reservoir. We will not know additional details until we have a dive team that was already potentially come onto the reservoir and do a three-year inspection of the integrity of the reservoir and then the infrastructure, the valve, the inlet and outlet mechanisms as well. I just want to take the opportunity to reassure the council and the listening public that our supplies for the upcoming dry season is more than sufficient. We are still above average where we are, you know, within the last seven or eight years, we're a little low, but we are consistently where we need to be. And once again, we do have, if it's completely dry head out from this point on, and we are looking at some conditions, we can bring online the groundwater facility as a supplement. And that's why that proposal was presented to the council of funding, was earmarked for the groundwater well, is to address the issues when we have them. So it was unintentional. We're still looking at, to figure out what the actual factual circumstances that led to the release, but we are in good shape with the supplies, and we don't anticipate any other unexpected releases from Centennial.
Thank you. Any of the, either public works or engineering, want to add anything to that report regarding Centennial?
Yeah, this is Scott Herman, Public Works Director. I just wanted to add, I just wanted to update you on the, on the lake level percentage. We're at 84% of reservoir capacity versus 93 at the last confirmation.
When you say reservoir, that's counting both of them together?
That is combined, yes.
Okay. And Brian told me a couple of days ago that there is still some water coming into Centennial from the watershed, probably not a large quantity of that, but it is still replenishing a little bit?
Yes, so, correct. Yes, Centennial's staying stable right now because we're not releasing any water to Morris. Morris has dropped down about, little over, just under a foot since, since last week. So that's usage to town. So as we, we try to maintain that level up towards the top of the spillway, so we'll be transferring some more water down slowly.
Do you anticipate either, you know, City Manager Bender or Scott, do we anticipate as the summer wears on, if we're not getting any more rain, that we would do any advisories for water conservation? Even though we have a pretty good supply right now, we're not in the same kind of trouble that some of the water districts south of us are, is that something that we should consider just encouraging conservation?
Well, we always ask for a 20% voluntary reduction and just be cognizant of your usage and if you see water flowing over onto the sidewalks or watering the grass, maybe might be a little too long. Yeah, just be aware out there that, you know, we are above, right around average, so we're not, we're not that far off. And like Brian, City Manager stated, that we do have a groundwater treatment facility that we can put online to supplement the surface water reservoirs.
Any questions or comments from council members regarding this? Greta?
This is a question for Scott. You mentioned that our current capacity, combined capacity right now is at 84% versus 93%, where it was when you gave us the update just two weeks ago. It sort of sounds like, you know, we've dropped almost 10%, and, and one might think it's because of this unintentional release, but is it possible that during this last week, which we saw a hot spell, you know, it's late in, that there was additional usage from water users that caused part of this drop? That this isn't, this whole drop isn't necessarily just from the unintentional release?
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's definitely the usage, too, in the last two weeks. You know, we're averaging, you know, 3 acre feet, about a million gallons a day, or just under. So you can, you know, some of the math on that, I would definitely contribute to just normal usage.
I was just thinking about our own water usage in my household, and it definitely increased during that hot spell. And so I just wanted to make sure that anyone who's listening wasn't alarmed by those numbers, that, you know, yes, we had an unintentional release, but we've also had probably an uptick in water usage by city municipal users, just because of weather and the season and gardens going in and all of that kind of stuff. So, thank you.
Any others? Yes, Sabrina? I will, by the way, I will open this for any public comment as well in a moment.
I think out of fairness and transparency, I do believe we have a general idea of how many gallons of water is lost, and I think the public, if we have a, if we have a factual number, we should also disclose it, even if it's not a comfortable number.
Absolutely, yeah. It's so, we lost about 76 acre feet, which is equivalent to about 24 million gallons, which is 24 days of water. So we caught it early enough, and it could have been, could have been a lot worse. The, the good thing, again, we have the groundwater to gain that back. So it's not a complete loss. It's unfortunate. It stung a bit, and we worked hard to get those reservoirs full this year. So like I said, we can, we can offset those 24 days over a longer period of time, but gain that water back through our supplemental supply of groundwater.
And then, then last, go ahead. Scott, what's the last question? Uh, Scott, is, the flood was obviously unfortunate, but I'm talking to City Manager Bender recently. We also talked about some measures that we might be able to put in place to bring attention if we were to have some kind of an infrastructure malfunction. Can you talk about maybe what some of those could be, or is it too soon to discuss this?
Yeah, no, we do have an alarm on our lower level, on, well, the upper level we're, Centennial we're, and we also have one on Morris, which has been reactivated. Unfortunately, the, when the 3G went away, the company didn't re-up our alarm, which I don't think it would have hit that set point where it was set for the winter. But we do have it lowered now, down to any, it wouldn't take much for it to text and email the operators.
Uh, Greta?
Um, I just wanted to clarify, so the loss was roughly twenty-four million gallons, but I, I'm under the impression that about half of that was captured by Morris, so it's not like twenty-four million gallons was released and, and into the streams, local streams and creeks, correct?
No, no, that was the, that was the difference of, um, so the total that was, that was removed from Centennial, um, set, uh, what was, so about a, let's see, how many, let's see, I have on that. So about seventy-five acre feet filled up Morris to the board, and then the other seventy-five went over. So we didn't, we only lost seventy-five total, which is twenty-four million gallons.
So that was the amount that was actually, uh, released down, downstream, which I guess is going to recharge the aquifer in the valley, but it's not in our reservoir.
Yeah.
Obviously, that was actually lost.
That's correct.
Um, anybody else want to comment on this? Anyone from the public want to comment? Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to comment, and it's not too late. Is Bear Camer off?
No, it's not too late. Go ahead, Bear.
Because I'm a little confused because I, when you said the supplemental water, groundwater that you would add if you had to, I'm assuming that you mean the well that's online right now and, and plugged in, and I was under the, and not this, uh, Long Twenty well that you're working on. And I was under the impression that the, the well that is already hooked up, is already hooked up all the time to the water district, and not as a backup. I have, I guess, I guess I have that wrong. Is that correct?
Yeah, Bear.
I can answer that if you have to answer. Go ahead, Nancy. Scott, you want to go ahead and answer?
Oh, sorry. Okay, yes, the groundwater, um, plant is always, has been connected since 2015 to our, our water system, uh, that's the Elias well. Um, we, we only use it when we, in, I guess, in a situation like this, or when we're flushing to supplement the surface water reservoir levels. But yes, it is connected full-time, uh, and, uh, we did not use it at all in 2020.
And, and you're correct, Bear, that the, this is not counting the Long Twenty, which is still just a proposed, um, project. That, that'll come to the City Council, um, probably in August as a, whether we want to move ahead with Long Twenty. Right now, we're just doing testing and, you know, preliminary studies on the Long Twenty.
Well, that's good to know. It's also, I guess, good to know that you can lose twenty-four million gallons of water and still be okay. That says a lot about our quantity of water.
Yeah. We, we are really blessed with having that watershed. Thank goodness. Um, okay, and I think that is it for that item. And then we have H.B., uh, which is a, um, proposed letter from the city, well, it's to the county, uh, Board of Supervisors regarding a request for a groundwater management plan. Um, and, and Brian might want to introduce what the, sort of the background that we did some, uh...
Yes, I think, you know, I think, uh, I want to close the circle here, so, um, you know, we're having a good, impromptu discussion about our, our water infrastructure and water resources. Uh, I just want to acknowledge the efforts of Scott and his team up at the water plant over the last couple of weeks. Uh, once this was identified, they were very diligent in their response, and Scott took it on the chin and it was not his fault, but he made whatever effort he could to recover and put everything right, so I want to acknowledge that. So, at May 12th meeting, the council received an update on the overall infrastructure for water resources for the city. Uh, and we had a good, uh, set of comments received from the general public and council members, and the extension of that discussion was, uh, staff was instructed to draft a letter, expressing the concerns of the council, uh, to the Board of Supervisors. And essentially, the, the theme was that there was a need for the county to step up and start, uh, working, composing and implementing a groundwater management plan for the adjacent area to the city. And that's what the tone of the letter is. And so we're presenting the draft letter back to the council for any additional comments. Anything you would like to see in that letter before we have Mayor sign and we submit?
Unmute myself. Um, I, I have a comment, but I think I'd like to open it to other comments first. Uh, any comments from other council members regarding this draft letter? Not seeing any comments from the public. I see Judy Breders' hand. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I think the letter needs to be, I don't know what you mean about, um, adhering to the water plan. I don't know what the plan is. I don't know what the plan encompasses, but I think what we, the initial request for the letter was to find out how many wells are in the Little Lake Valley, to see if any of those wells are monitored and to assess the water draw from those wells for year or day, month, whatever it is. Is there any monitoring at all by the county of any of the wells that they permit to be dug? I'm saying this only because on, uh, the road where I swim, I see them digging another well, and they've been digging it for three days, so I think that it's a deep well. And there are four grows on that road, and people are having their wells dry up, and, um, there's a lot of concern in the valley about water use for cannabis grows. So I think you need, I would like to see it worded in a more specific way of specifically how many wells are in the Little Lake Valley, how many wells are in the city, how much water is drawn from those wells. What are the criteria for getting a permit for a well? Has, has ever a well been denied? You know, or is it just willy-nilly, drill as many wells as you want, which is what they're going to do? Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the public? Um, yeah, I, uh, actually, I agree with Judy Breders' comment, and what I said at the meeting in May, uh, was not just that the county should do a groundwater management plan, which I think they should, um, but I think they need to have at least some baseline data about what is being done right now in the valley. Um, this last year or two, the number of cannabis grows, um, some of them legal, some of them not, um, have been just growing pretty rapidly, and the county just approved a enormous expansion of, of grows that, so, uh, from a quarter acre maximum, only certain zoning ordinance, zoning designations, they're going to, um, ten percent of the property acreage, which could be an awful lot of acres of growing and, and also opening it up to different, um, zoning categories. So in, in other words, outside the city limits, in the county area, our Little Lake Valley could be, um, subjected to a tremendous draw on our water resources. So the city is trying to be a very good neighbor and a good citizen and really study what we do with our groundwater wells, make sure that we're not going to impact our neighbors. I want to make sure our neighbors aren't going to impact us or, for each other. So I don't want to wait for a groundwater management plan that may be three or four, five years down the road. I want the county to step up now with some data on how many, yeah, as Judy was saying, how many wells are there in Little Lake Valley? Are they in use? How much do they pull out of the groundwater? I, I hope that the county has at least some, uh, data and then maybe some tools to, uh, at the very least, get a baseline, what is our situation now before all these additional expansion of grows might happen. Uh, because, you know, a year or two from now, we might find ourselves in a pretty, um, different situation and, and threatening, um, our groundwater resources. So that's my comment. Greta?
Um, I just wanted to mention to the council that I did, um, talk with Supervisor Mulhern and discussed, um, the city's concerns about having completed the groundwater plan, um, and the county not having done so, how that is setting up a little bit of difficulty for us in, um, talking with, um, uh, county residents, the unincorporated residents just outside of city limits. And she said that they are well aware of their need to do a groundwater management plan, and they are looking into funding mechanisms, and it will definitely be a discussion during their upcoming budget caring. So I just wanted to let the council know that, um, and I think that this letter is fine as is.
So other comments from, um, Judy, I don't think you took your last three minutes, so I'll let you go again. Sounds like you have something to add.
Well, the Board of Supervisors meeting last week said that two acre grow of cannabis uses twenty-two thousand gallons of water a day. And there are four thousand acres, um, in Little Lake Valley that are open for cannabis grows or agriculture. Two thousand for castrans, four thousand leftover for whoever wants to buy them. So if those four thousand acres were bought by cannabis growers, like R.J. Reynolds bought up Lake County acreage, those four hundred acres are the ten percent excess that the Board of Supervisors have just approved. And if those four hundred acres plant cannabis in those four hundred acres with eleven thousand, um, gallons per minute per acre, that would mean that the four hundred acres would use four million gallons of water a day in the Little Lake Valley. So if you think that the twenty-four thousand, a million feet that was lost in the reservoir that we just talked about, think that it might, that might just be six days of a cannabis grow if there were cannabis grows in the four hundred acres in the Little Lake Valley. Can we support that much water going out of our valley?
Thank you.
Four million gallons per day on the leftover four hundred acres that are available in Little Lake Valley with this thing. So I, I just am alarmed because I have a well, and, uh, I think we need to be proactive. I don't think we have a baseline. I don't think we've done the science. I don't think we have the homework. I don't think we know, we don't even know from how many wells we have or how much water is drawn out of them.
I think I have to call Tywin, that I need to, because it is, yeah, I don't know that we're being, um, monitoring those three-minute limits, but I, I think that given that that was your second time, we should move on, but thank you for your comments. I, I'm actually sharing your concern. Did, uh, Sabrina, did you have a hand up? No? Wasn't sure.
No, I'm not, but I, I hear Judy's concerns. Um, I think it's really hard because we serve on the Willits City Council, so we're, we, we only have jurisdiction over matters within the Willits city limits, but things that happen on our borders certainly have impact on our water supplies as well.
Okay. I'll, what? Is that Craig Gell, Bear?
Yes, it is.
Uh, yes, go ahead.
Well, um, the city turned my water off up here on 283 Sherwood Road because I don't own it. Now, I, I put in an offer for the place, and I'm waiting for the bank to get back at me, and I'm going to probably put another letter into them because they haven't returned my other letter yet, and so I'm asking for a special circumstance, um, that you can turn my water on here to vote for.
Mayor, the, the couple asked you?
There's a health hazard, there's, um, safety, I mean, everybody needs water. Now, I do have water here, but I have to bring it in a little at a time for a tank that I have out back, and, um...
Is this? Yeah.
Come from your side, is the item, please?
Yeah, please let me, uh, handle that, okay? As chair. Uh, it is, it has been brought to our attention with your letters, but it is not relevant to this item on our agenda, I don't think, unless you can, um, tell us how that, how you're commenting on this letter to, from the city to the county. But I don't think, so go ahead and, you know, send us information, and if, if it's appropriate, we can agendize that, but it is not on our agenda, so...
I did send you a letter.
Yes.
Believe, yes.
Yes, but I don't know that we have an item, um, we do not have an item on our agenda tonight regarding that, um, your concern.
So I need to wait for, check the next agenda out and see if it's on that agenda?
Um, I guess I would, I would have you discuss that with Brian Bender, the City Manager, and see whether there is an action that we wanted to, um, either recommend, recommend yes or no on your request, um, that could be agendized, but you can't, we aren't able to act on an item that's not on our agenda, am I right?
Okay. Got it, thank you.
Uh, yeah, I, okay, um, so what I would, um, I'd like to entertain, if there's support for it from the, um, from the other council members, that we, um, go ahead with the letter, but add a phrase both in the first paragraph and in the last paragraph, that in addition to, um, working towards a groundwater management plan with all the stakeholders in, um, Little Lake Valley, that we also request the county immediately, uh, develop and, um, provide to the public baseline data regarding the wells and what, uh, yeah, basically baseline data regarding all of the wells in the valley. I think they have some information, and I think we, we should request that that be, um, more immediately available, not wait for a management plan that might be years down the road. And I'm not providing the exact words, but that's the intent that I would like to see added to the first and last paragraph of the letter. And if somebody would like to make a motion with me? Yeah?
Yes, I'll, I'll make the motion in the interest of transparency, but I think that would be, because it really is a county issue, but it's causing a lot of, uh, concern in the community, both in and outside the city, so I think asking the county to make that transparent out there is important. It's my one back there.
Okay. Um, so the, could we count on Brian to put that into the right wording? Then he, yeah. So that's a motion from Jared Gonzalez for the letter with an addition to urge that there be, uh, transparency on data available regarding groundwater use in the Lake Valley right away. Is that paraphrasing it reasonably? Is there a second to that motion? I will second it. Um, so discussion, if there's a concern about the wording, maybe we should have that actually, um, before us, before we vote. Or if there's a word, if there's a concern about the intent of the wording that, that people don't support, I'd, I'd hear that. Any comments before we vote? Brian, do you feel like you can put that into wording so that if we do get a majority vote on this, we know what we approve?
Yes, I mean, that letter is a proposed effort between Brad, Scott, and myself, so I think we have enough... I think we had enough instructions from the council tonight that we could put language in there that accommodates your concerns. I guess, do you want to return on a council agenda for a follow-up view or?
I would, I'd like us to act tonight because I think time is of the essence. Some are coming in.
I, I am confident that I understand what you were asking from the letter.
Okay, so there's a motion and I've seconded it. So if there are no other comments, let's leave roll call vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Connie.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mayor Strong.
Yes. Okay, thank you. And I'll, I'll look at the wording. I'm sure Brian and his staff can, can get that into, it's written in diplomatic wording. Okay, moving to...
I didn't have that.
No, I, that's not a, it's just appropriate wording. Okay. Rumor reports, anything else, Brian, that you'd like?
Uh, I get to close down on water infrastructure. I just want to remind the listening public, certainly encourage them to see vaccinations regarding COVID-19, especially in the 101 corridor through the county here. We are lacking kind and I just want to make sure that that message is announced and that the county website has perfect information, good testing and vaccination clinics to empty hell. They are holding them here in the city, at city hall on alternating weeks. Once again, I just want to make sure that is clear because by June 16th, the day after the, the tears go away, it's going to be a little different environment out there and we just want to make sure that we do the best we can to protect ourselves and our tools.
Yes, Jerry?
Plus apparently you'll be entered in the lottery. Apparently I heard that somebody from Mendocino County already won $50,000.
Yeah. What am I paying?
Yeah, that's the benefit there, so it helps open up our economy.
That's what I have, Mayor Strong.
Okay, all right. So we're going to go to a department recommendation, item 9A, approval plans and specifications for a 2021 dig out and pavement preservation project and authorizing advertisements for bids. And city engineer Wilburn is put down here as presenting. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Strong, council. The, the proposed project under the pavement preservation, I'm trying to get to the edge of the item here, under the pavement preservation project is a pretty, an extensive dig out project, partially funded by, by Caltrans through, through the, gosh, what's, the SB1 funding, sorry, and the other portion would be funded through the absent sales tax. And it's, it's an interim measure to restore in, in some of the bad spots, some of the really bad spots we have around town with four to six inches of pavement. And it involves a grinder coming in and digging out those sections down to that four or six inch level and bringing back and plugging that with new asphalt. And it, it's essentially, it gets us through until we can, we can pave some of the roads. Some of the roads aren't going to be paved until sometime in the future. And it, a lot of times it needs to happen before an overlay or something like that. A project of that sort is, or as part of a project, an overlay project that would pave the entire street. So portions of Bechtel Road, Poplar, McKinley, Marin and State, some of the higher traffic areas on Marin and State are going to, are proposed for this, this project. And it's, the engineer's estimate is 382,000 with the 10% contingency. That's a total budget of 420,200. This is important just, just for the fact of trying to improve and preserve the pavement and just to say, we don't, the city hasn't done a lot of dig out projects, so that's why there's probably a, oh, this is larger than, than a typical, a typical dig out project. So the recommendation is to, to approve the project, to go out to bid and as I stated earlier, 100,000 of that would come out of S, would be funded by SB1, the remainder out of absent sales tax. Jeremy, did I, did I miss anything?
Uh, we, we're not totally sure we're going to get that $100,000 max this, this time. We've had to ask for an extension. We've been granted them in the past. I, I assume we're going to, but we're, we're not sure yet. Staff definitely recommends going ahead with the project either way, the good project and it's going to go to use, so, you know, 100,000 dollars in our pocket from the state or not, we think it's needed.
Thank you.
Yeah, I forgot to mention East Commercial Street and South of Nor, there's, there's a couple of bad sections in there that are going to be repaired as part of this project. Sorry.
So the entire, the list of, and the location of the places is in the agenda packet if anyone wants to, to go into the details of it. But as I understand it, as a layperson here, that there's sections where there's too much damage to simply do a, a, a sear seal over the top to preserve the pavement. So your, the dig outs are to repair those small segments where there's actual damage and then you can put a sear seal and that will preserve, extend the life of that road for a period of time. Is that a layperson's close enough?
Yes, that's, that's definitely, that's correct. We did, we did a similar project in 2012 on Sherwood Road. We did a combination of crack sealing and, and dig outs from the intersection with, with Main Street and the, the city limits, so.
Any questions or comments from council members before we open the public hearing? I am not hearing any, any comments or questions from public on this item. Okay. I think repairing roads seems to not be too controversial. It's a good idea. So I will ask for a motion.
I would like to move stop right to the motions.
Okay, moved by councilmember Gonzalez. Somebody want a second?
That's all seconded, Larry.
Okay, seconded by Larry Stransky. And if there's no other comments, we're going to go to a roll call vote to begin.
Yes, councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Connie.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mayor Strong.
Yes. Thank you very much for your work on that. It's, as I said, people want the roads to be and to be fair, so that's great to make progress. Moving to item 10, city council announcements, communications reports, these include any of the various agencies that some of us serve on, on behalf of the city. So I'm just going to go around the, the council members and you can report whatever you have. Greta, do you have any reports?
I was unable to attend, attend the uncog meeting on Monday, so I have no reports. And I'm sorry, Larry, I didn't have even time to call you to let you know I wasn't going to be there.
And Jerry, do you have any reports?
Uh, we had Lapco met on Monday and the only thing of note is that there was an appeal from the city prior to the justice on the call. They were appealing a, a connection by Lapco, a director, regarding their attachment from, I guess it's, I guess it's a, involving prior sanitation district and the bill was kind of withdrawn and apparently the sanitation district is being prior, Lapco, all, by the resolve of, hopefully without legal action. So kind of got stayed, that was kind of the big question, that's the difference.
Okay. Sabrina, do you have any, any parts?
Nothing.
Okay, how about Larry, do you?
I have nothing.
Oh, my goodness. I have several actually, so I'll, I'll go ahead with those. One is that Economic Development Financing Corporation, EDFC, will be meeting tomorrow afternoon at 2:00 PM and people are welcome to join that meeting. We have a new development director who, I think this has been there for about a month now. They're kind of going to a two-person leadership rather than just one general manager. And I believe she has been consulting with our community development staff a little bit. For one thing, we have the CBBG grants that EDFC is, I think, helping the city to manage that and it's a good thing. And then she is interested in any help on grant that might be available for grants for EDFC's work. So that's the EDFC report and the meeting will be tomorrow afternoon. The following Thursday, which is June 17th, 10:00 in the morning, is the Mendo recycle or solid waste management meeting. And there is a ad hoc committee working with the various jurisdictions to see if they can come up with a way to close a budget gap with, and the recycle is sort of in a structural, revenues don't equal the expenses. So they're, they're going to come up with a recommendation that will probably be coming back to the city council because we're part of the joint powers along the regulations. There is also, I wanted to report, I guess that's up here, that I am planning to do a second mayor's update to Channel 3, Community Access TV. I did one, I think in February and I, I gave Brian Dender a copy of my, my draft report and he added a few things, but I'm going to basically cover kind of the, the things that he's been reporting to us in the weekly updates. Talk about the fact that we, I don't know if you want me to go into a couple of minutes of, it's going to probably take about a 15-minute report on Channel 3, but I'm recording it this Friday, so if any of you want to see my draft before I do it, I could tell you, I could send it to you. Basically, I'm just going to say we've adopted priority goals that we're looking on, some of the changes going on at city hall, including some nice staff changes and additions, the COVID situation that Brian mentioned, the fact that we have testing and vaccines being administered here in the city. Our budget is under development, it's going to be a little behind schedule, but it's looking pretty good. Some good news in community development, the police department, the fact that we had some new, we have a new chief and a new staff, vehicles coming into the fleet, things like that. Talk about the utilities, including letting people know that this proposed long 20 well is being studied and will be coming up for review in August and letting people know how they can get involved in that and a very, progress on public works, including the parks and pool being open and things of that sort. So I, I don't think there's anything controversial in, I think it's important that we have updates out to the public, so I, I'm looking forward to recording a little update on Friday at Channel 3. Does anybody, anybody want to comment on that at all?
That's, that'd be exciting once you're going to put out this, but I don't.
Okay, I'll send you a copy of it. I'm not, I'm not doing it for Adam, I'm just, let it pop out. Okay, so great, I will send that to you, Jerry. So one other thing I wanted to report, two things, no, it was, I, I had a phone call a couple of days ago and the person didn't give me his last name or how to contact him, but he went on for quite some time about the situation at the Jackson State Forest, Jackson State Demonstration Forest. And it's something that I do care about very much. It's not directly a city matter, but at our sort of western border of Little Lake Valley is, is kind of the beginning of the Jackson State Demonstration Forest and there's some logging that is being proposed there that's very extensive. What this caller was asking for was that we would take a position, asking for a moratorium on that logging. You know, the, the city in the past is solid, careful about taking positions on issues that go beyond our borders, but I wanted to report that that was requested of us. You know, I do personally feel strongly around writing letters of my own, but if anyone else from the city council feels concerned about the extensive logging, some of this, along the trees that they're marking for logging are like 200 years old. They haven't been logged for that long. And they're also a very big recreation resource for the whole state draws tourists here. If anyone else on the council would like us to consider a resolution urging the Demonstration Forest to, to do a moratorium, I entertain putting that on a future agenda, but I put that out there. That was, was requested. And as I said, I sup, I supported myself, but whether the city takes the position is not the matter. Okay, I believe that is the end of item 10. Is there any good in Willits? Oh, yes, Greta, go ahead.
This isn't a committee report, but I would like to make a recommendation to the council. Last week we received a letter, I believe all of us received this letter, from residents of West Oak Street regarding their alley there. Senator Bender and I had a question about it and it seems to me that it would be a good idea for the council to discuss the Willits alleys and what our ultimate goals might be with them. I know there have been mentions in the past about the city relinquishing certain alleys that don't contain either city utilities or, you know, that aren't paved or in some way utilized by the city. And it might make sense to work with residents like these who may be interested in taking over that property that is no longer being used by the city. So if anybody else thinks this would be a good idea to at least start this discussion and respond to these residents, I'm looking forward to some support.
Greta?
I believe they were looking for status quo and not for us to have, I read the letter about.
So Brian, yeah, so Brian and I discussed it and he had actually talked with some of the residents, he also lives on that street and apparently they had some other concerns.
Yeah, so disclaimer, I do live over in West Oak, but, but I do not, I'm on the north side, I don't have an alley, Jason's my property. So it was, the, the letter was, it just came out of context, we didn't know, it just was delivered to the council members. Further investigation with conversation I have with a neighbor and as well, talking to staff, apparently there's a little bit of uncertainty among certain residents on West Oak Street on the south side. I guess some residents would like to see the alley vacated by the city and some owners would not like to see the alley vacated. So in the letter that the council received is from members of that neighborhood who expressed concerns about keeping, as Jerry mentioned, the status quo. But... expressed concerns about keeping, as Jerry mentioned, the status quo, uh, but, but that does not, uh, negate that, I guess, the council or the city staff has received other inquiries in the past, uh, other, um, alleys and alleyways and rightways that apply, but that are utilized in their original intent. So that might be something we look at, um, you know, map these efforts out, map these locations out, bring it to the council, and open up.
I don't think it's one of our priority items, so I don't want to have too much staff time taken with, um, looking at, you know, little, little alleys here and there, but, um, when, when something pops up that people are upset about, then I guess there has to be looked at, so I guess we will, um, have staff put out, you know, if, if there's, is a reconsideration of the status quo on that alleyway, that that would come to us and, and we can, is that adequate, or do we need to do something within that?
Well, the funny thing is that, you know, you received that one letter, um, we haven't received any notice from, we have, it's for vacating the alley, um, so we don't know where this actually ends, so I think we need to do a further investigation and see where, what we need to do to take it to the council.
Okay, Jerry, go ahead.
I, I believe that was kind of a belated letter, uh, we had had a little approach by another neighbor, was interested in us abandoning it, I think, but I talked to Dusty about that letter, indicated, that person may have been called, you know, check with your neighbors, see what they're interested, which may have spurred that letter, this guy. Um, basically, uh, I, I guess the only reason I would be interested in this is if it made sense as a city-wide thing, and as time permits, stuff came back and said, hey, look, we can save money, or it's not going to be an issue for us, you heard about these alleys citywide, but like Matt said, it's, it's not a priority, but it's one where it made sense from a business standpoint, as a city-wide thing, looking beyond the rest of, then, uh, I, I, I would be interested in that, but that's my luxury.
Okay, so for, for the time being, it doesn't sound like, um, there is a proposal to change the status quo, so this letter's been received, and so far, we're still in the status quo. Um, that particular one, I, I agree with Jerry, though, if, if time permits to look at other alleyways and that it ultimately saved the city some money, maybe that's a good idea, but it's not, uh, it's important, it's all the other stuff we're already working on. Okay, um, thank you, any other reports that were good and welfare from city council members? We, of course, have Frontier State coming, that's a big thing. Yes, Jerry, go ahead.
Uh, just a reminder that graduation is happening this week, and at Silver Grad, I'm involved with that, um, Silver Grad, Friday, Friday night, for, for, um, so that's happening, and so everybody, I'm going to come celebrate with those kids and just wish them well. And like you said, with the Zai's coming, and so downtown, um, I'm not sure if we'll have a meeting before the next, uh, first event for that, but that's, that's important.
I don't think the, the first event of Frontier State is on the 18th, which is before our next meeting, um, so that'll be, uh, an open house there on Main Street, people are encouraged to come and enjoy their neighbors and their businesses on Main Street on the 18th. Um, so that's the good and welfare, and, if I didn't miss anybody, we do have two closed session items, so, um, before we adjourn to closed session, those items are, um, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code section, um, with our various negotiators, um, and employee organizations, which is both, um, the police organization and the rest of our staff. Um, so that's one of the items, and the other closed session item is a conference with legal counsel pursuant to another different government code, uh, on existing litigation pers, uh, having to do with Alexis Blay Law versus the city of Willets, she was the, uh, former chief of police for a few weeks back in the fall. Uh, so those are our two closed session items, and if there is anything to report out on that, we will report out, um, at the end of the closed session. Judy, were you waving your hand, uh, something to say, or just saying goodbye?
Bye-bye.
Okay, uh, all right, so, um, we're returning at 5:00 after 8, and we'll go into closed session in five minutes. Only for council members and the visiting people that are in closed session. Thank you.